Yeah.
Yeah.
We're on.
We're in a meeting, but.
It's okay. You have a cold.
If I do, forgive me.
All right.
If I get real.
Go ahead and get started. Anyone rise for punch?
I'd like to use the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business, the council needs to go into hopefully a quick executive session with our attorney. We'll be going down to Tim's office. If I could get a motion for that.
I'm looking to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA section four five dot six E.
Second, motion and second, all those in favor will do roll call. Jeff is on Zoom. John.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Jeff.
Hi. I.
I wrote yes, motion passed by zero. We will be back. Hopefully very soon. I'll go ahead and make the motion to come out of executive session at six fifty one.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor say aye, John.
Aye.
Jessica, aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
All of us, yes, making that's five zero. Thank you everyone for your patience. Try to make that as quick as possible. Moving into our normal order of business, we have approval of minutes for our last meeting.
I'm looking to accept the meeting minutes as written. I can give the data on three, three oh eight twenty two second.
Your motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye, John.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Jeff, Jeff.
Aye.
Aye.
Now I vote yes, motion passed by here. Thank you. And next we have the treasures warrants from Mar seventeen twenty twenty two and the amount of two hundred forty eight thousand four hundred thirty one dollars and fifty cents.
And I'm sure we signed the treasures warrant dated three seventeen twenty two and the amount of two hundred eighty, two hundred forty eight thousand four hundred thirty one dollars fifty cents.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, John.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
All your votes aye, motion passed by here. All right, presentation, we have Pat from the Great Works Regional Land Trust.
Actually, I'm Pat Robinson. I'm on board Great Works and I live in Brown Street. Tim Smith from Great Works is actually doing the presentation, so hand it over to Tim.
Thanks, Pat.
You guys can sit or stand, doesn't matter.
The owl follows you.
I'll find you.
Okay, we have new technology. Yeah, 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 they explained it to me a long. My name's Tim Smith. I'm a volunteer with the Great Works Regional Land Trust. I live in Wells, Maine. And I'm the project manager for this project. I appreciate your time tonight. I'm interested in talking about this project in brief, but more I'm interested in hearing any comments you might have or questions you might have about the opportunity we have. This is a fifty eight acre property down on Old Fields Road. It's got about twelve hundred feet of frontage on the tidal portion of the San Marcos River. This is probably the largest parcel left undeveloped like this Maine. And it could be also the largest undeveloped or unconserve also in New Hampshire side. Land Trust has been working on this for a little bit over a year to see if conservation was possible. And luckily, we have a an interested landowner. They have given us some time to raise the money to purchase this property. And that's sort of why we're here today to see if, you know, what is possible to do. Right now, we've been looking for funding sources. As you can see from the sheet I passed out, we raised a little over half a million dollars already on the project to donations and grants and but they're all.
Are we talking about?
To the documents.
To the documents. Oh, it's in here. Okay, all right, my. Go ahead.
All right. And so what we're looking to is to raise the rest of the the money. And we're looking at a variety of different funding sources as we go forward. One thing we're running into because we're looking at larger sources like the federal government or the land main future program is that it's always helpful, you know, if the town is a partner in the project to get funding. That's why sort of this is sort of an introductory meeting for Great Works and the council to see if this could move forward. And with that, I'll, you know, answer any questions again. That was really what I wanted to hear was any thoughts you might have about this project and how maybe Great Works should go forward with it. And we moved. So when they came to us with the Vine Street Bridge project, it's still ongoing. The bridge committee was looking really for the town council's buy-in, our public support of it, more so than a dollar amount. Is that where you're going right now? Is our public's support of it that we think it's a good idea? Council stands behind your fundraising efforts or are you looking for the town to make a donation to the cause? Okay, there's a number of options here. Certainly a support would let her be would be great. But we're also looking for potentially that some of the grant sources require our municipality to own the property to accept the money. So that's another possibility. And certainly, nothing speaks to an outside grant source when this town funds involved in the process. So there's three ways that the town could participate in this project. An example, we're doing one in North Burwick right now. It's a federal grant program. The town has agreed to be the owner and the town put on the warrant article and approved a hundred thousand dollar contribution. So we're moving ahead that, you know, and that's for an area similar to Recreational Area at Bonnie Bag Mountain. That's the type of projects we can do. We can do it on a number of different levels. I think it's just, it would be easier, the more town support we got, the easier it is to convince, you know, outside funders to take notice. Because again, you know, it's not just the land trust saying that this is important. If the town says it's also important to them, and it's a big difference when you're talking to people. And we have a good start here on the fundraising and so we're looking to move it forward. It's gonna be sort of, we envisioned sort of low intensity public recreation, you know, more for walk. It wasn't woodlot, forested, been managed by three generations. For forestry, it was last harvested actually in November of a year ago. Not a year ago, about fourteen months ago. So it's been actively managed, but it's still in excellent condition. It's a beautiful spot. It's got high blocks that overlook the San Marcos River. There's frontage on Old Fields Road for parking, envision putting trails in. It's just sort of connects, you know, there's eight other protected properties between the town, the state park and Bonwood's along. So it's almost two hundred and seventy acres consisting. On the opposite side of the river, New Hampshire, they predicted they've protected over fourteen parcels in that same stretch of river. So they've been doing a lot of work on their side too. So it's kind of an opportunity that'll only come up once because we are unable to conserve that property, landowner, they're done. And so they will be selling the property one way or the other. They have just provided us with a period of time to see if we could raise the money and so forth.
What is that period of time?
Right now, it's two thousand and twenty three.
So you guys still have about one point three, I got rounding up left to secure, right? But factored into that is construction costs, things like that. Are you? I mean, I would assume the first really just acquire the property. Or are you looking to fundraise that full amount before?
We're looking to fundraise the full amount. We don't want to get just the acquisition of the property and not have the ability to make it available to the public. So we have money in there to not only do the initial construction like parking lot, we also have money in there that will help with maintenance of that over time. We feel that's the best way to do it rather than continuing to go back and try to fundraise. So we're trying to look at to be self-supporting once it gets going.
Do you have any estimates as to how much fundraising you might expect from those other funding sources that are listed here?
No, we're just starting that out. There was, there's several promising ones. One's called the Cal Coast Celestarian Land Protection Program. That was just funded last November in the infrastructure bill. And so we've done the guidelines and the rules. But that was one, one funding source that required municipality to own the property. And again, like in the North Burwick project we're doing, while the town of North Burwick will own this property, they are going to have an agreement with Great Works, so we will manage and run it. So that could be a possibility in the town of South Burwick, although it doesn't have to be. Choose to manage the property on their own. But we would do offer that if you choose, if you could choose to go that route. And we would manage that property for public access, put in the trails and do the maintenance. But that's up to the town. Do any of these grants limit the use? Yes, they do for different things. That's why right now it says low intensity public access. It seems to be, again, we're us as a conservation organization, those are the type of grants we look at. The one in North Burwick is Land and Water Conservation Fund. That's again a federal program. That's more directed towards a little bit towards more active recreation. But they will not pay, they only pay half of the money. A lot of these funds only do half, so they have to raise the other half somehow. So I was reluctant to say we do real active recreation, them only giving us half the money because, you know, where does the other half come from? But so, you know, and that's, you know, really how we've looked at it so far. But again, this is, again, sort of open to discussion. There's nothing here really been decided. That's why it was important to come down and talk to you and hear your thoughts and continue that conversation.
The timeline is the end of twenty twenty three?
Yes, right now with the landowner who's giving us. So we'd like to do it a little sooner. I mean, the count program, actually, I've been told that they will make the rules, announce the rules in April with an application due in June and that answer in the fall. And they would like the project completed this year. So that's a pretty tight timeline for a lot of money. But they're gonna, what they're saying is if the project is ready to go, they are gonna give it high priority. And that's all, that's again, why we chose to come to here in March, you know, to start this conversation. Because it could happen quickly. Well, quickly. But anyway, so, yeah.
Quick question. Do you guys have like expertise on staff to be writing the grants yourselves?
Yes, we've done. Yes, we've done a number of projects. We've done like a hundred and forty three projects over the thirty five years the land trust has been around. And we're from, and we own like seventy eight, seventy eight parcels of property. We have eighteen preserves. We serve the six pounds of the three boroughs, the Dunkwood, Wells and Elliott. So we're experienced in doing this. We also have a staff that does a lot of stewardship. You know, we're out there on trail, organizing for the community. So we do.
I was kind of researching different grant opportunities and I noted the coastal communities grant program, which lists South Burwick as a community within Maine's coastal zone. But the state within that grant did find in appendix three that in the current coastal comprehensive plan consistency findings, South Burwick isn't loaded. So as we move towards updating our comprehensive plan, if we can put that more alignment that as we move forward, knowing that there may be grant opportunities that require some information. Any other questions, Jeff?
No. Sorry.
We're not gonna be able to take any action on this.
Right.
But I think we could certainly, well, definitely put it on our next agenda to discuss and kind of decide what we, what we want to do as a council. Just to summarize, you all are looking for just general support of the project, but probably more equally important financial support.
And owner and potentially have ownership, if that would be acceptable. Because that would again would open us.
For us to have ownership of the property.
Yes, because that would open up a couple of possible grant opportunities. So the only limiting issue I have on total town ownership is prior to us having that discussion is going over the uses of what is, what it's open and available to. Because if it's only open and available to hiking and walking, that's not me. We own land like the town forest where you can go hike, you can go hunt, you can go fish. Everybody can do what they want to do comfortably. And that's a great boom for the town. And this would be a great pickup for the town. This would be fantastic. Because again, it's coastal, woods, it'd be a nice area to recreate. Well, and that's the feeling for the Great Works Land Trust too. I think of the seventy seven properties, seventy five of them opened to hunting. Right, which was my, my thing with these new grants, do they limit you to? No, you can't. That's my only caveat there. And most of them just fall under local rules, which is permanent. It's up to the town. I'm good.
Are there any other like ramifications from it being town or land? And forgive me, I don't remember with the other Great Works properties in town, if you're all on those or if we do, but like whether understand that what that, does that mean for us?
We've had a partner, we've had a partnership like on the town forest, running property, so kind of done it jointly.
Yeah.
There, a number of the others like Ours Falls, we've done that project and owned it entirely. Although against South Burwick contributed money to that through a ballot initiative. So it's, you know, that's one thing, Great Works tends to be flexible on that one thing. Again, with the community, like in North Burwick, again, they are participating in that way. We just did a project two years ago with the Dunkwood and they put a ballot initiative on. It was a project similar to this size and they made a contribution of three hundred thousand dollars towards that. It was like one point two million dollar acquisition. But every, every project is a little bit different and it knows one of the reasons kind of likely here tonight, that it's got to fit in with your vision of the community too. I mean, as representative of the community, that's what we're looking to do. And I think, you know, John, you had some good points. What do you want to do on the site? And that's exactly what we want to know. So I move forward because. I just want to be using. I want an open access. I love open access. I, my view, I want to conserve as much property as we can because this area isn't like it was when I grew up here. I mean, the four hundred acres I played on in Elliott is still four hundred acres thankfully. But a lot of that's gone. A lot of its houses where I used to go hang out, we used to come do stuff. So I'm all for anytime we can preserve large lots like this. But I want to make sure it's available to everybody, everybody in town that wants to do their particular hobby. I would like to have them have access to it if the town owns. That was my only, that's it. That was my big piece.
Along with accessibility towards multi-use and whatever, I also think that hope that we look forward for people who don't have accessibility options. I know the Free Works Land Trust is doing some ADA accessible trails. And as we look forward to the future and we think about aging in place and what we want to do in our seventies and eighties, if we start planning for those things, especially in new developments as we're carving up trails, I think that that's just something we should keep in mind.
And this property actually is a good one for that because it doesn't have a lot of topography. This is usually the difficulty in ADA compliant or favorable trails. And this one doesn't. It's largely flat. It does, I'm related, but it underlies on a very low grade. So it's not. Bonwood's. What's that? It's not Bonwood's.
And then maybe funding for those types of opportunities. Any other questions from anybody? Great, thank you. We'll put this on our agenda.
Okay, great. Just very much. Want to put the plug in, Pat? Membership is open for Great Works Regional Land Trust.
Thank you, John, for your.
Another reminder.
You can get a very nice bag. It's very nice. But membership is open. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, public comment. Is anyone in the room or on the phone have anything to comment on that's not on our agenda? Nope. All right, cool. Tom and.
There was man, funny, I think, cool. With highway, the road's gonna be reassessed this Friday for taking down the road postings as needed. Some of them might have to wait another week or two. In the last two weeks, police departments had zero arrests, one accident, eighty five traffic stops. And if you didn't know, Patsy Chaney is our crossing guide out here. She's been doing that since, how long? Well.
Quite a while.
Quite a while. Patsy passed away one week. So I want to certainly offer our condolences.
Yeah.
And, you know. She did the community well. She was out there for many years. So when we do determine when the service is going to be. Uh, so when we do determine when the service is going to be, certainly I'll send, you know, some flowers, and to make sure that we make a presence, you know. New body cameras and new Florida radios have been ordered to the police department. Um, the fire department last two weeks has had eleven calls, code enforcement has issued seven permits, and has conducted fourteen inspections. Lanning is still working on marijuana and solar panel wood and updates. The library started their own newspaper called the Southborough Greed is Rag. Um, they're hoping to get more articles from the community, so that's really exciting. Um, summer reading programs, two or three events have all been planned already. Recreation, the ice rinks down, the kids are taking advantage of the basketball court being open. Hottail Hill will be closed for the season, next few weeks, they'll be taking down the ropes. April ninth is East Day A-thon. Which includes. A DJ, police presence and fire trucks. Um, Nikki and Maureen went to a conference, a rec conference last week, for training, got a lot of good ideas. And they're working closely with the police so that. The children can have a greater police presence around, at a younger age, community police. Assessing, Vern has been working on map changes, D changes and updates. Uh, growth numbers and sol- solar extension reviews. Finance, clerk's office been busy posting all the property tax payments coming in. Feeling lots of calls and questions regarding your loans too. Um, transfer station, we finally had a bag with our town name on them. They've been backwooded since September, so. Another used piece. Um, working on fixing up and building up the transfer station, they've got one hole in the floor and getting the roof and. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
There's always so long you could ignore the problems when they fall in. Under administration, I have posted in accordance with town code policy, the police position, police chief's position. Um, it's posted internally until this Friday. If I, there is a criteria with it. If I have any qualified applicants from inside, I will entertain them. If not, then I will advertise the job outside. If I have an inside qualified candidate. Then that process will stop, uh, put together an oral board panel, which I'm working on currently, which will involve citizens in the community. Other members of other law enforcement agencies. And we'll do a two, two or three tier step process, and that process would be. It'd be a set of essay questions that the candidate would answer first, then submit his resume with those essay questions, which would go into the whole. Oral board committee, the oral board committee would then review that, we would then. Uh, the panel on the oral board would put together questions that would be, um, approved by myself and a lawyer. We will do an oral board where they come in and they get asked the same questions, and scored on all those questions, which come up for the raw score as well. So I score the, we score the essay questions, and then a final interview with myself and one member of the council. And if all that's successful, then I field my recommendation by town code. The town code does very clearly, Ken researched and I researched to make sure, very clearly states in all cases of hiring, it will attempt to go inside first if we have qualified people. Scarborough went out to do a, uh, you know, they ended up doing two nationwide searches before they got their police chief. It took them over a year. Nobody's jumping at the door to be police chief right at the moment, it's just not the world. So we'll see what we get. Um, I started that process and we'll be moving forward. My goal is that if it's internal, that I would have something, um, how it works is, or how it's supposed to work, is I. I make a recommendation to a point, I bring it out to you and you confirm. If all goes well and things work out well, we might, you know, have this resolved by early May. If it's not, then. We'll be moving forward. Lab of Labor Safety Training scheduled for the Fire Department on Sunday, three twenty-seven. Um, it's gonna cost them. Coffee and donuts to the instructor, because instructors may. So, so you know. Then we're doing the office staff here on Monday, and then starting in April, we'll be doing, I'll finish public works and transfer station. And then we're, we're well on our way to finishing. Getting our complacency stuff done. Um, I've been working again, as we started working with the staff as far as. What I discussed with you back in, um, early February. About town hall, town hall facility, getting updates, getting ideas for their work size, what would work for them. We're asking all the employees that work in the building. Um, I got a meeting tomorrow with Mike. Lassell. Yeah, two o'clock. So Doc, excuse me, Doc, both. What had been done before? Um, so we're making very slow forward progress on that. Hopefully we'll have something. We talked about floor space. Primary floor plans. You know, the employees are coming up with good ideas, things we need, but obviously all that's gonna come to you at some point. Uh, we're looking into what to do with the glass at the redemption center, because nobody's taking glass anymore. So looking into whether we do recycling bottles and cans. A lot of transfer stations do that, you know, they, they box it, and you'll have a recycling company come pick them up when we get the money for it, so.
I remember something about a blast crusher or something, something.
Yes, we had talked about that, um, and in talking to Jay, we're not rebuilding our roads so much anymore, so the need is no longer there.
All right.
So it would just. Be fine, it'd be fine, and it wouldn't catch you or anything, but we still got to dispose of it.
Yeah.
So.
Most communities have moved away from blast pressure, there, there, there have been several pertinent lawsuits on liability because of the dust from the grass. Blast crushing, um, and regulatory issues. Um, police department had an old police guy that. They needed to, that need to have the brake fixed and it's available to you, so we took it here. As our staff starts changing, we start to see people, Vern is getting good news in the car. Joe's getting busy with code enforcement, so those vehicles are no longer available to anybody, so we have a car now, I need to go somewhere, Jenny needs to go somewhere. It's in cost as much to the business. That is my. Any questions?
Great, um, thank you. Move on to unfinished business, uh, number one, marijuana caregiver licensing, anyone from the public have anything to comment on this? This is sort of just for those of you who aren't here on a regular basis, um, number one and number two under unfinished business are sort of just. Placeholders, um, indefinitely until this work is resolved, but as Tim had mentioned, um, the planning boards continue to do work on, um, those items. So I don't think there's anything new for the council to discuss this evening, um, but I will ask for unfinished business number two. Um, home application enforcement standards, any comments from the public? Um, and unfinished business number three, police union contract, Tim.
So here's the final renewed, not the final, the final, but there's an appendix on the back, we added to the new pay scale that they requested. There's one change that we had missed, um, I want to bring to your attention. So if you would open up and find article thirty-two. On page seventeen, I think. Nope.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Well, twenty-two, twenty-four, so if you look at the second paragraph, says the town would pay. One time pay out of one thousand for bachelor's degree, five hundred for an associate degree or employee hide after that. So we talked about raising the salary, so we raised the salaries up to be competitive. So I looked at other areas that we could probably be competitive in, and I, I just didn't get in here, what we had talked about. And kind of we agreed to is, instead of that, we would pay them twenty-five cents an hour for their. Associate's degree and fifty-seven point an hour for bachelor's degree, that's more in line with what other towns are doing. But because it's not in there, they agreed and we talked about it, and I said, I, I had missed that. They would take that, that wouldn't be till the second year of the contract, it's a two-year contract with a three percent write-off next year. Um, and that only amounts to three or four thousand dollars, and it's another incentive that when we're trying to recruit. And, and we're competing with the young kids, and they just got out of college, it's not a lot, but it's something that we put in our hat to say. You know, here's another incentive, instead of just one time pay, I'll pay you, it goes into your salary, so. Because if you got an associate's degree, or you got a bachelor's degree, use that knowledge, don't just use it once, use it all your career. That's the only change, other than that, we're done, and I'm waiting, I just need. You to decide whether you want to do a tentative agreement, I'll do an offer them a settlement letter, and I'll do a ratification vote. This, the numbers that are in the budget that was presented to you for the budget. Is in this contract. Thank you for all the hard work. It, it was actually easy. I have great staff and I'm, you know, they were good to work with, they never hired a union lawyer, we, we had three or four meetings and. You know, it went well, so we just were there and they said, that's where we're at.
Any questions from anyone on the council? No?
No, question was.
So you are looking for a motion for a tentative agreement for this contract, right?
Yep, please contract, with that, with that additional change, you're not.
I move to, um. Authorize the town manager to. TA, the draft, um, leash union contract. Southborough, um, presented this evening, three twenty-two. Two thousand twenty-two, second.
Question in a second, um, the only piece of discussion I have is that we should just probably amend. That to include the changes to article thirty-two.
That's why he said that is presented.
Oh, as a reminder, okay. Nevermind, any other discussion or questions?
I caught it this time.
All right, um, we'll take a vote, um, all those in favor say aye, John?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, all right, um, there is one item, um, that is not on our agenda on this evening. And as a result, I'm going to, um. Ask for a motion to suspend the rules, um, for our typical meeting, so that we can discuss the topic of ill life harvesting.
I will second your motion, suspend the rules.
Thank you, um, all those in favor, suspend the rules, say aye, John?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Much thanks, five zero. So we are now discussing the topic of ill life harvesting, I have a cheat sheet here. Um, so for Jeff and Jessica, probably this is newer for, for you all, I know I was like, what is this? Um, each of the council must take action on the harvesting of l wives and blueback herring. Um, the council must either close the waters within Southborough to harvesting for conservation purposes, or, or institute an ordinance prior to April first. So this is something that comes up every year, um, and we have to complete it by April first. Or any other color that anyone wants to add to this topic, but it's not my expertise.
Yeah, so when we, when, uh, I'll go back seven years, it's been the council's pride. And the council's wish to have it closed three years. Um, it used to be open, it was well overfished, people were going down, lobster were going down, grabbing fifty-five gallon drums out of there. To use for lobster bait, because it was cheap, so it was closed, uh, four or five years ago, I think, Jack. I had a group of local fishermen approach me, uh, the New Hampshire study, UNH studies it from the other side of the river. The numbers were increasing, so we decided based on their study and them opening it up right across. You can walk across the bridge to fish, but you can't fish from our side, it didn't make a lot of sense to us. So I think three years ago, we decided to open it up with limited harvest, it's twenty-five l wide, right, per.
Max one twenty-five fish per day.
Per day, per fisherman, so, and we haven't seen any issues. There's really not a lot of people to fish, so that's, that's how we got where we are today.
And the license has been stayed.
So it's your, when you buy a fishing license, you click the, click the box if you want to fish saltwater or not, Maine doesn't charge saltwater like most other states. Things great that way, so yeah, it's, it's done by the state, and. This came to a head three years ago when one of our local fishermen was stopped by a fishing game down there and. He's not happy, he's not happy to do it, and he didn't get a warning, he did not get taken, but that's why we looked into it deeper.
There is another factor with this, um, it allows the town to make a little control. If, uh, if, if that lapses, it could go to the commissioner. Appoint a third party to, uh. To, to manage or, or use a fisher, so we, we're, we're making a little control of that difference, actually.
Any other questions or anything?
I mean, is, is there, where do we get the data to, that we as a council know that everything is hunky-dory? Right now?
Right now, Google, Google the numbers and the UNH study. That's it, that's what we've done in the past, that's where we have had, New Hampshire, we're still basing on the fact that New Hampshire allows it, uh, the numbers are up every year. So.
Also, is this, uh, something that the Conservation Commission should be a part of, um, in the future, or do we just not? Do that?
Strictly state of Maine fishing.
Yeah, heavily regulated by, by, uh, inland fisheries and wildlife.
We're one of only thirty-five towns who have to deal with this.
Yeah, it's a small percentage. It is well covered.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what Barbara said, she said around a thirty-five, what?
There are only thirty-five towns in the state that have to do this.
Sounds good.
All right, um, I will offer up a motion then, so, um, motion to authorize the taking of l wives and blueback herring in Southborough. Is allowed by the state recreational fishing limit. Of a maximum of twenty-five fish per individual per day for the twenty-twenty-two season, commercial harvesting, not the one.
Second.
Your motion in the second, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye, John?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Right, um. That was new business, zero, I guess. Um, moving on to new business number one, appointment of election clerks.
Before we move on this.
Yeah.
What is written? Of the current workers, the proposed workers?
They're all proposed.
They're all ready and willing to go.
The current workers on our list have been working prior elections, the people nominated by the Republican Party that took place at their caucus. So these people volunteered to go on this list.
Okay.
Do you need us to go through and, and appoint all of the current and newly elected though for this, for this?
I, I'd be prepared to respect their names.
Cool.
If, if that's, that's the next thing to do.
I have that, Jack.
Okay, I move to appoint, uh, the following. Election workers. Gerald, Gerald Dean Hilton, Jane Lynch, Patricia Whitman, Arlen Goodwin, David Stansfield, Bob Eager. Karen Benoit, Henry Miller, Bill Howell, Lita Galvin. Susan Bernier, Richard Bernier, General Lee Leonard, Deborah Garrett. Angela Vonley, Bernal Bailey, Paul Steinhour, Cameron Steinau.
Jack, one correction, it's Leach, Jane Leach.
Where did I see?
And through May twenty, May first, twenty.
Is it Leach?
Leach.
What did I say?
Leach.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
And we want to appoint the listed people through May first, twenty.
Yes. Point the above listed residents as potential election workers through May first, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. One just piece of discussion for this. And this is just reading from Barbara's notes to keep me honest, but. Appointing by the council allows the clerk to use the appointed residents for election workers, but it's not a guarantee, but those workers will be hired. And it also doesn't prohibit the clerk from hiring someone not listed if deemed necessary for running of an election. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye, John.
Yeah, aye.
Jessica, aye.
Jack.
Aye.
Jack. Aye.
Aye. Motion passes by zero. All right, new business number two, set public hearing date for the budget. I'm going to honestly don't remember what date.
April twelve?
Yes, I just.
I move to. Pull the public hearing on the budget on April twelve, two thousand twenty-two, at six thirty PM.
Second. And we have a motion second. Sorry, second picture around. Any discussion? All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Jessica, aye.
Aye.
John, Jeff.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes by zero. All right, moving on to new business number three, comprehensive plan. We don't have anything in our reporting documents, anything specific here. I know, I think Jack and Jessica, there were a couple of things I think you guys wanted to bring up on this topic.
Well. I'll throw a motion on the table. And then we can open it up to the manager. There's just a couple of amendments to the original. Memorandum. So I just don't have the date of that in front of me.
I have, if we're talking about the memorandum of understanding, that's sort of like our con contract, I guess you could call it, with us in the agency, right, of what we're expecting.
Well, it's basically a covered agreement that covers the proposal.
Yeah.
And that that was detailed, the scope of work. That's currently being proposed.
So I have one thing that I wanted to bring up as it relates to the comp plan and I don't know if it's appropriate to include that in the memorandum of understanding or not. So I'm going to bring it up now and we can figure out where it goes. One, one thing I would like to. Put on the table for the comp plan for all of the phases that we end up tackling with it is. If, you know, I know that the part of the goal is the comp plan is to sort of come up with this list of sort of like. Things you want to accomplish in town, you know, different initiatives. I think it would be really helpful in terms of us. Having more of an action plan and actually taking more action on things in the comp plan, if included in that we had some. Rough cost estimates for each one of those items as well as like a timeline as far as like, is this a month-long project? Is this like a multi-year project, you know, just sort of ballpark numbers? Because I think. I think about like in managing work and managing projects, those things are tangible kind of measures that help me prioritize like what's the next thing to do. And I think especially the cost thing, given that all of these things are going to cost money. Having a ballpark number in there for those will be.
In the proposal, there is a draft bar chart for the timeline. Is what you're seeking. To get a cost breakdown of each one of these.
No, no, no. I'm talking about like in the final comp plan, like I'm just, this is just making stuff up. But like, let's say, one of like the kind of initiatives, I guess, that we might determine as a result of the comp plan is to like. Fix our sidewalks, just like as an example. What is like the approximate cost of fixing our sidewalks? And approximately, how long will that take? Like, and I'm not saying like specific numbers, but like just numbers to allow me to. Way one thing higher than another thing, you know, because otherwise. Then how do we decide what's the next thing to tackle? Because there always is a financial component to it, no matter what.
I would suggest, as we know, like this comp plan will probably age over time and whatever we outlined in the comp plan. So perhaps use like a Google restaurant rating of like one dollar sign is not so expensive and four dollars.
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
Just to like visualize.
Yeah. Yeah, like the one dollar sign works with five or three or whatever. Yeah, just something to allow us to kind of. Easily discern like what are, what is like the low hanging fruit from a financial perspective versus like the bigger financial commitments? And then just like loose, a loose timeline of. We expect this is probably like a month-long thing once we get going or whatever. So I don't know if, I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on it. It's like where. If that that's just like sort of like a committee charge piece or is that something more for S and P C? Am I the only one who thinks this way?
No, I, I think your idea is merit. It's, it's. By nature, the numbers are going to be, using. Non-money terms, squishy.
Oh, for sure. Yes, of course.
It's really tough because of, who would predict a piece of OSB would cost? Thirty-eight dollars or two by four costs seven fifty. I mean, using that as like a lumber comparison to civil work, civil projects. It's just, it's hard to do that, but I think is a. There's probably another component to that. To cost those things out, I would suggest that we. Go ahead and identify. Things that are in the interests of the various phases of the plan. And then subsequent to the preparation of document. You know, prioritization of what people see and then. Like go ahead and do some budgeting with it. We use department heads and things like that to formulate that and then. Following your point, priority number one. Might end up being a priority number three or two, put the money.
Exactly, yeah.
But it's, I think, keep it, keep it on track to identify what the priorities are and then follow that up. With the cost investment. And then it's, I think, more useful to whoever's sitting on the council at that time, that comes before the council.
So one of the things I've seen in other conflict where hypothetically, redo downtown Main Street, three million dollars. Put all the packed benches on Main Street, twenty thousand dollars. Though putting packed benches on Main Street might be the low priority, it's an affordable priority when it's listed at that time. So when the day and time comes and you're looking at those priorities, they're not just numbers on a page, you can say. Yeah, this now becomes low hanging fruit. Though we want to do Main Street for three million, let's at least hit the packed benches out there for twenty thousand. It's something we can accomplish that's. Easy and it's just tangible. It just means you, you have to dig in accordance with what Jack's talking about. The council then or somebody in the committee will have to take the plan. And once they develop, you know, what the objectives or the strategic tactics are. The longevity of how it's going to take, short-term, long-term, extra long-term, five, ten, fifteen years. You know, the priority of that and then a base estimated cost. And that's all hypothetical, but it's something you look at in paper because what happens is. In five years from now, when John's gone and Jack's not here anymore and three more faces on the council. And we pull the comp plan to do the budget and I ask that same question all over again, what are we funding? That's going to be a factor. It's always a factor. So I think, I think I agree with you. I think it has merit. To give new councils coming in, you, Jeff, the opportunity to review this plan and say, oh, well, can we move on this? Can we do this? Otherwise than that, you're looking at just ideas on the paper.
And I think Jessica's idea of kind of doing the the dollar sign and scaled thing is helpful because you're right, Jack, numbers are squishy. Lord knows what will be happening with inflation in a few years or next week. So but it kind of just gives you like some scale to be able to pick out what are the bigger and smaller.
More reference to you folks, for the folks on the board. But that doesn't need to be in the MOU. My recommendation of that is that's just a condition the council applies to the project.
Okay.
And that the MOU stands as it is. Thank you, Jen. Jen printed it off.
Thank you.
I got it on here, but I don't have these amendments.
They don't have the amendment either, it's just verbal.
So this is the same as what Paul signed on the sixteenth?
Yes, that's what this is.
So. What I was going to do is put a motion on the table to amend. Memorandum of Understanding, you can assign a south board at Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission. As executed by. Paul Schumacher on three sixteen twenty-two and further amended based on the comments of the manager this evening.
Say, I'm all right with that.
Sorry, what are the, what are the comments from Tim that were?
So, the comments, the changes was I question what number three. Number three?
Yeah.
Number three and seven.
So number three was. All products, you can have a agreement, she'll be in the by town provider, the commission may retain file copies. Where are those file copies going to be? And basically what he replied was they're going to be. There's always two copies. They'll get a copy, we get a copy. Make sure that we have records, they have records. Because Jack had a really good point in earlier conversation. Again, as the faces of the council change and staff changes. Time, time that gets put on a shelf and then the next thing you know, we can't, the new manager come in, we can't find it. And then it's easy if we call them and say, can you pull this off the shelf and give it to us? So he said that was, so he answered question number three. My other question was number seven, space supplies, town shall provide it. Has its offices, all supplies, office space equipment, so forth, and clerical support staff. And I said, who, why, how much am I just going to cooperate? He said, take it out. So number seven is just deleted. Otherwise than that, I recommend that the council move forward with approval. And authorize me to sign it.
We need to modify our motion, right? We didn't discuss those changes until I can motion say.
I think I said it as a minute. Did you get that?
Any questions or anything?
It says that director of planning, is that in place at this point for number six, a project officer?
Swear I do.
Number six.
No, that's, that's their, that's the person who's the lead for them. Yeah.
The commission.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor say aye, John.
Aye.
Jessica, aye.
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 Now, I vote aye. Motion passes by zero. So on the topic that I brought up about the the dollar signing timeline estimate. Do you think we should make a motion to make sure that that's included in kind of our overall?
Yeah, so then we can involve that later on as the project moves forward to, again, things change. We can say we want this to be a requirement and I'll make. I'll make them know, I'll notify them that as they start their process that something can include in there.
Okay.
That'll be interface is moving forward.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I'll offer a motion on that. It's probably not something that we'll, we'll get to for a while, but at least it'll be recorded. So. I'll just make a motion that in our, in the final result of our comp plan update. We include a cost estimate using a. Scale approach and timeline estimates for each proposed initiative. Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye, John.
Aye.
Jessica, aye. Jack.
Aye.
Jack.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion passes by zero. Thank you all for entertaining my suggestion.
Speak with, is it today or yesterday?
I don't remember. There's many meetings today.
We discussed having a point person in town here and primarily at least. That person's going to be Don Morel. That's cool.
Yeah. So she'll be the keeper of the records on the book.
Yeah, so. It'll be appropriate to contact the S and P D C to. To arrange a meeting and convene a time and then we can let the. The steering committee know as well. I would get to know your meeting.
Yeah. Well, I take that probably in contract, but that's going to be amended. It'll be a new revision, so I can take it back and I will. Rewrite that and put them up to you one more time.
All right, anything else on the comp plan? Council member comments? Jeff, you want to go first?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
I just want to give shouts out to South Berwick Recreation Department for their social media outreach. It's on Facebook page and a new Instagram page. And I think that's fantastic to engage people in recreational activities. And I just wanted to also place it in front of the council on what we need to do as far as public outreach. Intercommunication strategy.
I'm working on it. I promise you, I am. With all the other stuff I am, I'm working on.
Thank you, Tim.
I think our new website will make a big difference and I think one thing we, this is just me, me talking as one individual. But I think like our past experience with social media and stuff as it relates to town business has. In my opinion, not really been. What it should have been. And I think if we were ever to do any sort of social media stuff, I feel like it's simply just for the purposes of sharing information, like. Announcing this is happening taxes or do like these types of things, but it shouldn't really be a forum for people to just.
So I looked into, I have to get honest, but I looked into Facebook, right? Easy, everybody has it. So we could do, we do Facebook page. Just want to be careful because you don't want people disparaging people, comments, employees. I have legal rights I have to take care of. North Berwick set it up with, once they, once they revitalize their website. So they got a, they did a Facebook page. So you click on it and you go to download it and you open it and it takes you right to the website. And the first thing that comes up is announcements. So when you click on North Berwick's Facebook page. It goes right to their websites and it comes to the announcements. That would be a good safe way. We need to get the website updated for us, but that's, there's a connection we can make right there.
So people use Facebook basically to get to where we want them to get to.
Right. Then we could, you just one click. And because when I talked to them, I said, how do you prevent? It's a dummy page. It's just a, it's a cover page. You click on it and it only drops you right on your Facebook page.
I love her.
And so in talking to Duane about it, that's what he said. He said. So you go on, you click on it, I tried it, takes you right to their updates and announcements. We can do the exact same thing. Excuse me. And with a new face, the new website. We'll be able to have much more interactive, updated calendars, information announcements and that stuff. So I'm looking forward to accomplishing that, but I got to, I got to, I'm getting it. So I am researching and just, I'm working on it.
Thank you. Any else?
We, we're in the spring and I wish everybody happy spring. Winter's over by at least the. The sun will move, so I'm looking forward to a good spring.
Snow will be here next week and that's all I have to say.
You're a bad man. Evil, evil, evil.
Snow will be here next week. We'll get a foot.
A melt in the deck, so.
All right, I don't have anything. Did you have anything?
No.
Any good news? I don't have anything there.
Out of the chair, I moved a juror.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Don't talk about spring and how everything is.